And I'll call the order of the business of September 22, 2015. Madam Deputy Kirk, will you please take your role?
Nedapigian.
Present.
Kenneth Baron.
Here.
Thomas Berry.
Here.
Robert Constant.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Absent.
Margaret Horvath.
Absent.
Joseph Kozinski.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Angela Keller, our videographer, to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Angela?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next order of business is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
Move the council approve the agenda for the meeting of September 22, 2015, as submitted.
Second by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number four, approval of the minutes for A, the minutes of regular meeting of September 8, 2015.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Constant.
I move that the minutes from the September 8, 2015, meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council is set forth in agenda item 4A be approved.
Second.
Second by Councilman Apigian. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number six, fund transfers and current claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Berry.
Motion to approve current claim 6-1 through 6-34.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number nine, reports from city officials, 9A from the Fire Chief Brogan, Federal AFG General Grant.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Apigian.
I move to approve of Chief, Fire Chief Brogan's request to accept AFG regional grant outlined in item 9A. This is a request to accept federal AFG regional grant for a total amount of $674,750. This grant is to be purchased for the purchase of radio equipment for nine other communities. Dearborn Heights share is $198,500. We have a 10% match, which is $19,850,000, to come out of our capital outlay fund.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the mo-- I mean, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 9B from Public Service Minister Zimmer, the 2015-16 My Deal Road Salt Contract Change Order Number Six.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Berry.
Motion to approve the change notice number six by Director Bill Zimmer, as outlined in 9B.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 9C from Assessor's Office, Probowlski Millage for the Downriver Disposal System Bonds.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Apigian.
I move to approve of Justin Prilbilski's request for the millage for the Downriver Disposal System Bonds, for the millage requested of 1.6662 mills, that the taxes collected in excess of that specific judgment payment can be used to reduce future payments, as outlined in 9C.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
I'd like to ask the Treasurer quickly, I think we talked about this, Mr. Riley, and we are actually down--
It is going down for last year.
Down from--
1.8 something.
1.8 something to 1.66 now. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 9D from Assessor's Office, Probowlski, lot split of 6905 Gully.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Apigian.
I move to accept the recommendation of Justin Probowlski's recommendation that we approve a lot split outlined in item 9D, as indicated in detail.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
You know, I didn't, I tried to make sense of the survey form that was submitted by Callahan Group. Justin is not in today, is he?
It looked, it looks like there are three 40-foot lots that they--
Are they combining two of them?
Combine them into two.
Okay.
So they're, they gave 20 to one, 20 to the other, and, which is not a bad way to do things.
No, I agree. Yeah, I agree. Thank you. That answers my question. Appreciate it.
I don't think they should be any bigger than that in a neighborhood of 40-foot lots, but that's what they're doing.
Councilman Kozinski, do you have a question?
Essentially, there were three 40-foot lots reconfigured to two 60-foot lots. And I find it interesting that the subdivision is called Gulfdale Quarteracre Subdivision. Lots essentially on my street, which is in the same subdivision, are 66 frontage with only one 80-foot lot. And this is reasonable to move forward with the two 60-foot lots. They're buildable now, and they weren't before.
Well, they're buildable at 40 feet, too, but this is a way to handle 40-foot lots if people want to combine them. Not make them two 80-foot lots in a neighborhood with 40-foot lots, but it's a great solution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 9E from Police Chief Gavin, annual condenser cleaning payment.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
Motion to approve the payment to CISCORP, as outlined in 9E. Support.
Second by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 9F from Community and Economic Development Director Ayman, CDBG for the year 2014 ADA Berwin Restroom Project payment.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Apigian.
I move to approve of CDBG Director Ron Ayman's suggestion that, I mean, request that the 2014 ADA Berwin Restroom Project invoiced with, concurring with his recommendation, approve of the payment of the attached invoice in the amount not indicated here in the letter in his, but indicated for the entire Berwin Restroom Project, as submitted details in 9F.
Second. Mr. Chair.
Second by Councilman Constant. The amount is on the next second page. 16,775,000.
Yeah, I just wanted to look for it fast, right?
16,775.
16,000.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bathroom.
Motion carried. 9G from Emergency Manager and Director M. Crapp, Fall/Winter 2015-16 Dearborn Heights Today Newsletter.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
Move council concur with the Emergency Manager, Robert Cancrapp, and conform to his requirements with regard to the Fall and Winter 2015-2016 Dearborn Heights Today Newsletter. The gross amount of this consideration is $7,900, all according to item 9G.
Second.
Second by Councilman Apigian. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 9H from Treasurer Riley, engagement letter for Miller, Canfield, Pat Ock and Stone PLC regarding City of Dearborn Heights 2015 refunding bonds. This is a received note and file.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
Move we receive note and file the engagement letter from Miller, Canfield, Pat Ock and Stone, as outlined in 9H.
Second. Support.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number 11, Ordinance and Resolutions, 11A, for Miller, Canfield, Pat Ock and Stone PLC, Resolution Authorizing Issuance of 2015 Refunding Bonds, Limited Tax, General Obligation.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
Motion to approve the resolution authorizing the insurance of the, insurance, insuance of the 2015 refunding bonds, as outlined in 11A.
Second.
Second by Councilman Apigian. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number 13, New Business, 13A, Business License Renewal for Fetzers on the Beach, 5127 South Beach Daily.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Apigian.
I move to approve of the business license of Fetzers on the beach located at 5127 South Beach Daily, as indicated on 13A.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. This ends our regular portion of business. Is there anything to come from any of the council members?
Yes.
Councilman Apigian.
Unfortunately, about a month ago, I made an announcement that I wanted to hold a pri-- not a private meeting, a public meeting on issues pertaining to trees and other sundry things. And unfortunately, two weeks ago at our regular meeting, I was absent, out of town, and I couldn't accelerate that meeting. So I'm announcing today that the meeting that I suggested that all of you could attend will be held on a Saturday at the Carolyn Kennedy Library between 3:00 and 5:00. Yes, 2:00 and 5:00, I'm sorry. Three hours, the library closes at 5:00. We're doing it on Saturday afternoon. Senior citizens don't like to go out in the evening, and this allows people that are regularly employed, because it's a weekend, to come out as well. So I've developed quite a list of over 100 people that I'm aware of. Of course, a lot of people say they'll come, and 50% may show up. But there are other people collecting names, and several of the homeowners groups are getting email blasts to show up, and all of you are welcome. If you have any questions, you can call me on my cell phone, area code 313-5856500. Hopefully, we'll have an interesting conversation, and everybody will decide it's important to save our trees.
It's Saturday?
No, the, October 3rd, I'm sorry. October 3rd. Gives us a little time to get everybody to call people, and thank you very much.
Okay. Anything else from any council members?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
Councilman Apigian, repeat that date and time.
Saturday, October 3rd, 3:00 to 5:00.
Two to 5:00, you said.
Two to 5:00.
Two to 5:00. I'm sorry. Three hours, right. The, gives you plenty of time, if you're late, to still have something to say. Thank you very much. October 3rd, 2:00 to 5:00. I don't want to be late to my own--
Okay.
Indicate the subject matter that is going to be dialogued.
The issue of preserving our trees, tree ordinance, we could talk about a couple other ordinances that are relatively simple, the fences. We had a problem at our last meeting about definition of fence issues, but the important thing is, it takes two and three lifetimes to grow a tree. And if any of you that don't realize how important that is to your property values, go to Brightmore, which is a disaster in Detroit, Six Mile and Telegraph, just drive in. Beautiful forested area, in spite of the fact every other house is burnt out, every other house is a vacant lot, every other house is not occupied, the place is a war zone. It's beautiful because of those gigantic trees. They're the things that make your property valuable, and if you don't learn to preserve them, and property owners have rights, we'll talk about all that, and I'm sure there'll be our ideas, but that's what makes this the Tree City, hopefully. Yes, peace.
I don't know if I can say this, but I would like to bring up the fact that there is a lot of trash being thrown out everywhere.
You're going to give her a separate time.
It's littered, it's, it's--
That would be a separate time, too. This is just something that Councilman Apigian is doing on his own.
You'll have an opportunity to get up and speak. I don't usually make a lot of announcements.
And nothing more from the council mayor? Did you--
Just for informational purposes, we've had difficulty finding a new assessor. I did apply for, and we've received a waiver that if worse comes to shove, Justin is recognized by the State of Michigan to sign our role. He's far enough in the process, so to guarantee that there's somebody there to sign the role, we have now done that. So we'll keep the council informed, but I think that was an important step, because of, you've all--
Oh, yes.
Yep. --know how difficult this has become. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Constant?
And our season for the Dearborn Heights Goodfellows is approaching. We had a meeting yesterday in which Councilwoman Mark Horvath, who's participated year after year, participated by phone. Our paper sales this year will be December 5th, and then, as we did for the first time last year, those who are going to be the recipients of aid will pick up their packages for Christmas at the Berwin Senior Citizen Center on December 12. So the request for ads has been mailed out, so if anybody's interested in running an ad in our Goodfellow paper, they can get ahold of myself or any of the Goodfellow officers, and we hope we have another great year this year.
Good. Any announcements?
On Saturday, December 12, Wayne County is hosting a Household Hazardous Waste Day. This is a great opportunity to give, get rid of some of those items that are in your garage, that you don't want to put in your regular trash, because they're not good for the environment. It's Saturday, October 10, from 8 until 2, and this particular one is at the Wayne County Community College District Downriver Campus, which is on Northline Road, 21,000 Northline Road in Taylor. And so it's not far from many of our residents to participate, anybody in Wayne County can. They take fertilizers, chemical, pesticides, motor oil, propane tanks, fire extinguishers, smoke detectors, mercury thermometers, fluorescent bulbs, which also have mercury in them. And another important item is computer monitors, tele, old televisions, fax machines, and electronics. So they also do electronic recycling there. So it's a great opportunity to get rid of things that you don't know what to do with, because if you put a television out at the street, they're not going to pick it up. So this is a place where you can get rid of it for free, as long as you're a resident of Wayne County. So again, it's Saturday, October 10, and they have a phone number on the flyer, it's 734-326-3936, if you have any questions. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, John. Chief?
Just a short announcement. The end of July this year, we lost one of our police reserves, Eldo Gabriel. Eldo was a police reserve for over 25 years in the city. He served the city on the planning commission. He was also a good fellow. A lot of the elections, he would volunteer to help out, do security. So Eldo passed away, and his family still resides in the city. And then one other sad announcement is, the police department retired one of our K-9 dogs last Friday, Ozzy. He was the biggest dog. He had some health issues, enlarged heart, so he's been taken out of service as of last Friday. So we're down to just one K-9. Thank you.
He, he was, we recently obtained him, didn't we? What was it?
No, they're both about seven years old.
Has it been seven years already?
Yep, been seven years.
My God. Do we have plans of replacing them, or?
We're going to look at that down the line, probably the first of the year. We still have one in, in service, and we're going to look at another.
Chief, would you please repeat the name of the first person you mentioned, Eldo?
Gabrielli.
Gabrielli. Thank you.
Great, great guy. Got sick and died suddenly, left a family, just a great resident of Dearborn Heights.
Well involved in the city.
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Just wanted to talk about a few upcoming programs. Next Tuesday, September 29, at 7:00 PM at Carolyn Kennedy Library, Dave Serio of the Arab American Museum will be doing a lecture on Arab American Immigration. He will be focusing on three major waves of immigration since the 1880s, and give an overview of the vital contributions immigrants have provided us all since. So it should be a fascinating program. Next Wednesday, September 30, at 7:00 PM at Carolyn Kennedy Library, join us as we do an introduction to social networking. Are you curious about social networking, but haven't tried it out yet?
No.
Do you want to know what all the fuss is about? Join Holly Hipner as she talks about Facebook, Twitter, SlideShare, LinkedIn, YouTube, Yelp, Flickr, and more. Although not required, please register at the CERC desk or call 313-791-3800. But that's not all. Join October 6th, or Tuesday, October 6, at JFK Library at 6:30 PM, and Tuesday, October 13, at Carolyn Kennedy Library at 7:00 PM. Join the animal capers gang as they try and solve the hound of the basket cases. Sherlock Bones, the great detective, must figure out what's behind the spooky occurrences in the haunted swamp. Mr. Jim will also be working with Ranger Bob and Basil the Bear to uncover the machinations behind this insidious plot. So come on out, Halloween treats will be provided. That's all for now. Thank you for your time, and see you at the library.
He's always so entertaining. Thanks, Mike. He's good.
Any more announcements? Things happening in the city? What's going on? Okay. Then at this time, if anyone would like to speak, please come up to the podium, give your name, street, and the city you live in. You will have three minutes. Councilman Berry will keep track. When you have 15 seconds left, he will hold up this sign, and when your three minutes are up, he will hold up the stop sign, and we will stick to the three-minute plan. So if anyone at this point, please come up to the microphone.
Hello. Jaclyn Turner from McDonald Street. I just have a question for the Chief of Police. When you retired the dog, where did he go?
He became property of the handler, Officer Ross.
Okay.
Once the dog's retired, after five years of being in service, it goes back to the dog handler. So he's taking care of him now.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Mark Fitzgerald, 266-16 Brian Court. I wanted to talk to you about the condition of the concrete on our street, our court, and I talked to Mr. Baron about this back in the spring, and I guess he talked to Mr. Zimmer. And Mr. Baron came out and looked at it, agreed with me how bad it is. We were told at that time that it was put in the budget, they were going to replace the cement. The contractor actually came out a couple days later and measured. I talked to him. He said, "We're hoping to be on your street by the beginning of July." That's the last we've heard of anything. In the meantime, the street's getting worse. It's been swept twice this year. The last time was about two weeks ago. But now there's rerod sticking out of the cement, sticking straight up in a few spots, and people are going to start getting flat tires. And they did send a coal patch crew out, which they told me, "We're wasting our time. You can't throw coal patch on top of loose gravel. It doesn't stick." And they didn't fill in the holes where the rerod was sticking out. So I'm trying to find out, are they going to replace the cement?
Okay. Mark, okay. Do you have an answer, Bill, then?
Yeah, it is, it is in bad shape. We did actually go over and look at it. I thought maybe the supervisor had already communicated to him. It is on the list. We had a couple of dangerous catch bases that we had to take care of first. But I expect within another week, we are going to be over there, and that whole cul-de-sac will be replaced.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening, everybody. Zaher Abdulhaq, 354 Rosemary. Just have a question for the Human Resource Director, if possible. Have a question for the Human Resource Director.
What's the question, Zaher, that you have?
Question, the city posted two jobs recently, one for firefighter, and one, I believe, for clerk at the Economic Development Department. The qualifications for the firefighter degree and all kind of conditions and qualifications at, believe, $36,800 a year. Person who put his life at risk gets 36,800. Person who, that qualification is only not, to be notary public, and little knowledge about how to read things and how to assess contracts, and no degree, and no other qualification, at 39,900. I would like to know from her how they assess and decide how much that job is cost.
I actually believe that that's a progressive step, when a new firefighter comes in, until it gets up to the--
$60,000.
The starting wage.
And I believe the same thing goes for the other job, too.
Not necessarily, no. This is contractual, as it steps up.
So, no qualification for that person, nothing, except the stamp, $75, notary public? Who put these conditions? And how many people applied for the job, if I may know?
If you want to, I, you want to see Liz, do you want to answer that, Liz, or?
I mean--
Now is not the time, please.
How many people applied for the job?
15 firefighters applied for the job, a firefighter--
And how many?
--who applied for the rehab specialist.
Okay.
And if I could just comment on the salary?
Yes.
The salary was something that was proposed by the Community and Economic Development Director. It was proposed to City Council, that was what the salary was set at. And then with regards to the firefighter position, that salary was set forth by the collective bargaining, to Councilman Baron's point. It is a progressive, so our firefighters do go up on an annual basis.
It just seemed to me very odd that we don't ask for a qualification for a person who's going to receive $40,000 a year, except to have a notary public stamp, $75, anybody can get it. That's my question. I think we should look for a lot better qualification at $40,000 a year, even if it is going set for 10 years, you know, down the road. Not 36,800 for somebody who's going to put his life for us on the line sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, Troy Brown, 23420 Hanover Street, Dearborn Heights. I want to take care of some items from last week. One of them, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask someone sitting at the table, the mayor. He mentioned that Business 101 was to take over captured taxes and invest them, because we were talking about over captured taxes in the CSO bond, remember? Recall? So he said it was Business 101 to invest them. I've been asking for months what those numbers are. I've been asking for those numbers all the way back to 2011. So in the Business 101, I would think reporting is Business 102. So can I have, can we ask the mayor and the administration tonight, can you give me how much we've made from 2011 until 2014, when we were overtaxed, and how much interest did we make on that money?
Well, I don't believe we could do that now, but we-- Well, I don't believe we could do that now, but, uh, we might be able to have those numbers next week, when we discuss some of it.
Okay, and then why aren't they, if they're an investment, why aren't they in the Treasurer's Investment Report? If that's an investment. Now, you can't have it both ways. It's either in a fund borrowing or it's an investment.
If he individually does it or has them together, he may have multiple ones together. I don't know.
Okay, so, it's a C S O bond, is all by itself in the Investment Report, and it says nothing about interests that it gained from loaning it, from other, uh, loaning money to another fund. Okay. So, my, my next question is to Councilman Kozinski, and, um, I have, uh, I, I've got to ask him a question, uh, straight up, and I just wanted to know, Councilman, did you know that in 2012, and 2013, and 2014, when you voted yes to tax, to set the levy at 1.25 mils for the C S O bond, that that was in direct violation of MCL 141, 2701, item four? Did you know that?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski doesn't have to answer that, okay.
Okay.
This appears to be another, this appears to be another question that Troy Brown asked that we don't have answers immediately, which really makes this body look as if we don't know anything. This man has been campaigning since the flood of August 2011, and it's time that he gets stopped in that strategy because he is.
It's time that I have some answers.
Excuse me, Councilman Kozinski? Excuse me, Councilman Kozinski has a floor.
His strategy is to discredit everybody who sits up here who doesn't have an answer for him today. And if you, if you go back to one of his, um, emails that he sent to everybody, this man is a one-issue campaigner, and that one issue is for his benefit only. He wrote in a email, item number three, "My only concern regarding this fund is if there is leftover surplus after paying the intended debt, can such surplus be used for somehow to a new, to develop a new bond, or some other financial tool that will help my family out without waiting for my money from any other government entity. My family continues to suffer in fear of any rain, and our lives on hold, and our lives are on hold relating to our home." His opening statement is, "My only concern." He doesn't have any concern of the fourteen other people on Hanover who've suffered like everybody else in the flood.
That's not, that's not right, Mr. Chair, Chairman, Chairman. I have to.
Councilman Kozinski has a floor.
That's the strategy he's using, trying to discredit this body because we don't give him an immediate answer, making us appear as if we don't have answers. That's the strategy this man is using, and he is continually campaigned at this podium, which is against policy of this council.
No. I promised, okay, this.
That's what he's.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, you have to go back to the context and the date that I wrote that. That was somewhere in April. Since April, we have the July 8th email from the mayor telling me that these funds were invested, disclosing to the city, from Miller Canfield, that we were overtaxed. Everything changes with that. Now, I asked the councilman, did he know, that, that, I asked him a question, did he know that he was in violation? I didn't say anything about anybody else at this table. I asked him, did he know he was in violation? It's a yes or no answer. That's it.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman.
The council body acts as a body.
You voted individually, Councilman. You voted individually. You voted individually.
I have, I have the floor, Mr. Brown.
Then you got it, you gotta just put it in the right context. You, you're not gonna misquote me.
Kozinski has a floor. Go ahead.
You're continuing to do what you've been doing for the last thirteen months. You're campaigning on one issue, and that one issue is self-serving.
I promised I would be at this podium till I got answers, and I'm not getting any answers, Mr. Councilman.
Troy, your, your three minutes is up.
Yeah.
And we have our meeting next week. Okay?
Yeah, but they were taken up by him, misquoted me. They were taken up by him, misquoted me, Mr. Chairman.
No, I, I stop it when you stop talking, so I made sure you get your three minutes.
And I didn't get my question answered, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
Suzanne Todd Academy Street. First, I'd like to give credit to the D P W, to, in particular Leonard, who came out to look at my, uh, favored maple tree out front of my house, which is on city property, but I, I value the tree. And I think, I want you to know, Mr. Zimmer, that he is a good representative and, uh, an ambassador for the city of Dearborn Heights. You can be very proud of him. Now, Mr. Kozinski, you said that, wait a second, I have the floor.
Point of order. We're not gonna have any, if you start making accusations.
I'm gonna just, I, I have the right to rebuttal. If he can, I can. Why can't we talk? Why can't we rebuttal?
Point of order, Councilman Kozinski?
Whenever I sit here, the appropriate title I carry is Councilman Kozinski, not Joe Kozinski or anything like yours.
I said, "Mr. Kozinski."
But you said, "Mr. Kozinski." Prefix that by Councilman Joseph Kozinski.
Okay, and you, sir, will call me Suzanne Todd, R N, because that is my official title. How dare you, sir, accuse him of championing his cause? This cause has been going on for fifty years, fifty years, sir, that people's houses have been flooded with poop, with used condoms, with blood, with rodent bodies, and four feet of water in their living spaces. And you sit there and say he's only cham- cham- champagne for himself, campaigning for himself. You have me so angry. And then, I gotta sit there and listen to Councilman Epigen talk about trees. I love trees. I take care of my trees, even the city trees. But you know what? It's more important. You have no idea what's going on in the South End. And you arrogant people that sit up there and, and, and require that we have to have some kind of credentials to talk to you, that's wrong. Wrong. Who do you think you are? You work for us, the taxpayers.
That's right. Absolutely. That's right. Okay. Anyone else wish to speak? Motion. While we always welcome the concerns and comments of our citizens.
Wait a second.
Their views and opinions are not necessarily the views and opinions of the council and the administration. Oh, I did not see your hand up or come. Go ahead.
Um, Heidi Brown, 23420 Hanover, uh, Troy's wife. I just want to say that, uh, we do not forget what happened to us and to the fourteen other homes on our block. As, you know, I took care of some of the neighbors. We were out there helping them. So, we do, we do have concern for them, and we love them as, and we love our neighborhood. So, we did have concern for them. And, you know, I just want to say that all we're looking for is answers, and we feel deeply for these people that get up here and ask, you know, back in July, they were asking for help, and they didn't get it. And I just, you know, I can't understand why they have to keep asking. And so, I'm just wondering, when we have our meeting on September 29th, and my husband has been asking all these questions, is he going to have to ask the question again, and then we have to wait again for answers? Or since he's been asking the questions for so long, are we going to get answers on that evening?
If we can get them answered, we'll answer them. Okay. I just read my closing statement. I'll do it again. While we always welcome the concerns and comments of our citizens, their views and opinions are not necessarily the views and opinions of the council and the administration. I'll accept a motion to end the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilman Berry.
Of course.
Second by Councilman Conson. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.